I'm coming from DC, so I don't know how long I might take. So he will be drinking. And he is. You did well.
I came from DC, so I'm proud of myself.
Who is talking about outside agencies?
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may, could I, as you call this the order, could we change the agenda? Could we do amended agenda?
Can we do what?
May we do an amended agenda? And I'll tell you the rationale why. Number six, commission revenue, with what I have totally presented, it could very likely change all of two, three, and four that we discuss based upon what he says and what the consensus of this board is.
You just want to change the order of it?
Yes, sir, that's all.
Order, sure, absolutely.
I'd like to see six go first.
Six first?
Yes, sir.
Are there any injections?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Tom, you're on.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I was accounting administration. I'm waiting on my clicker. Thank you, Mr. Barham.
They call me Clickboard.
Clickboard, okay. Okay, so getting into this, we just want to talk about first kind of budget. Obviously, that's over here, personal property tax rate. You guys have been waiting for this for quite a while. First thing I just wanted to hit, because you all have worked with it every day like I do, is remember the tax rate, personal property tax rate is $4.86 for 100% value. That rate has been in place since 2009. Prior to that, it was $4.20, and that goes back to at least 1999. That's far back as I can find any data. So just to give you the perspective on that, here is what I put forward as our objective, with all due respect to the board, and you may have slightly different objectives. But what I thought we wanted was to safeguard current revenue levels, protect natural increase in revenue that we get from county growth, and then also, and I think this is important, to provide tax relief to taxpayers due to rising NADA values, which is pretty unprecedented. So one thing to put it into context, as we talked a little bit last time, vehicles only have increased in NADA value, but business, personal property, is not affected by NADA, at least not in any way as much as personal property type items. So I just want to keep that in mind as we get further into the discussion. So then, let's see, consideration, we want to talk about one of the, some of the things that I had put in, you know, put into the presentation were, you know, because I feel like this board is leaning in the direction, now it doesn't mean that's the ultimate decision, but we're leaning in the direction, I think, of a tax rate decrease for personal property. But there are, and I didn't talk about it a lot the last time, there are other options, okay? And you might have seen some of them in the news, and I'm going to briefly touch on those in the next couple of slides. But, you know, tax rate decrease, one of the things that I thought was most important is it provides a way for us to, you know, cover like inflationary costs that are pretty big right now, that haven't been big in the high stage for a long time, but a pretty big issue right now. Also, the tax rate decrease allows me and the finance director to kind of target or predict or reach targeted revenue levels where some of the other options don't provide a good way, a good way to do that. So the proportional, as I'll go through the next couple of slides, proportional and methodology options are, don't quite, as I said, don't quite allow me to do that as well as it can with a tax rate decrease. But it also requires testing of functionality. We're told that, you know, we figured out that we can do these methods, but they're not, it will provide a little more effort than with a tax rate decrease. We just, we either change one number on computer system or two, depending on what you all decide. Otherwise, with these other methods, we have a little more work to do. So not to belabor that point, you know, it's our job to get what the board, get done what the board desires. So real quick here is, there is the other method of changing the methodology. And we know most closely, the locality closest to us, Manchester City, has, they have used clean trade-in, and they are now, they have now switched to average trade-in, which does lower value, it lowers the increase in values, right? So I know Mr. Dunn and I have talked about this on the telephone, if you go from clean to rough, you drop those values a little more. They don't, they don't drop from last year's value, but they just increase less. So just be aware, that's certainly a method we can use. Another county that is doing that close by is Warren County, and they are doing the same thing. They're dropping from clean trade-in to average trade-in. Again, and I think when I was talking to Mr. Dunn, we sort of talked about how maybe it was like a two and a half percent drop from one to five percent to the next level. And what I've learned since those discussions is that it is really very vehicle specific. And then one vehicle might drop two and a half percent when you drop to average trade-in, another vehicle might drop five percent. So it's really, it's not only hard to get revenue targets, but it's hard to determine really what percent per vehicle. So anyway, I think, you know, that's one of, that's one of the options. Counties are using all of these three options that are going to go through different, and by the time it's all said and done, it's probably 30% of the county is going to do one versus another versus another. So then the next thing is change to proportional assessment option. That's where we would stay with clean trade-in. That's the, you know, keep the methodology we currently use, but we can, we can drop that to, you know, 90%. We could tax people on 90% of the value of their clean trade-in. We could tax them on 85 or 80%. I mean, I know that Newport News, for instance, has just gone to 75%. They just did that the last couple of days. They were going to go to 75% of clean, well, and I should say, I don't know, I don't know exactly what methodology they're using. I can't claim that it's clean trade-in, but they're, but they're using a 75% proportional value valuation. And so we learned, just recently, I talked to Commissioner down in Cumberland County, Calvin Massey Jr., and he kind of walked me through the process about how our braking system can manage that. One, like one drawback there, again, we got to test the functionality. We don't, we don't want to send out incorrect tax bills, and it does, it does provide a little bit more opportunity to make a mistake or to, you know, but that, but the functionality does exist, so that's good to know. Then we get to, last time I was here, this slide is just designed to kind of impart to you what we talked about last time was that you couldn't, you couldn't lower the personal property rate without lowering the business rate, the business equipment rate. The business equipment rate has to be equal to or lower than the PP rate, at least that's what it was, right? The last time we talked. So now, the new governor and the legislature have put through HB House Bill 1239, and that's been, that was rushed through with emergency clause. The governor has signed it, and what that does is up until January 1st, 2025, localities can, it removes that coupling. It's, they're uncoupled, so you can, you can leave the business rate up where it is and lower that PP rate, which for Mr. Graber, you know, that allows you to come down, you know, a little, a little fertile on that PP rate if you want to, if that's the desire of the board. But at any rate, I thought, I thought it was a good thing that at least it gives the lookout, different localities, the ability, it's another little tool in your pocket that you can use, right? You don't have to, you can decide, and we're going to look at scenarios in one second here that give you, you know, this is what it would be if you, if you decide to lower the personal property rate and the business equipment rate together at the same time. So anyway, here's the big, this is the big slide that probably everybody wants to at least see, you know, what the options, what the options out there are. And so scenario A is what I would call like a revenue neutral rate. If you're going to lower the personal property rate only, but you're going to keep natural, we consider the natural increase. Scenario B is you're lowering the personal property rate only, but you're saying, hey, we're going to, we're not worried, we're not worried about keeping natural increase. Scenario C is back to you're, you're keeping natural increase, but you're going to lower both the personal property and business equipment rate together and maybe keep them the same. Scenario D is lowering the personal property and business equipment rate, but you're doing away with or with the, with the, with, you're doing without the natural increase. So you can see that scenario A, let's see, is it, I'm sorry, scenario C provides you with the rate being at the highest compared to what it is now, again, for $86, $4.86. So scenario C leaves it the highest, and then the lowest one, obviously, scenario B, $3.78. So it gives you a range of things to do. And I just think it's worth, you know, pointing out that when, when you try to calculate revenue neutral for real estate, there's one number, you know, that's, that's it, right? There's, with personal property, it's not only more difficult to calculate because of a lot of factors, and, you know, we can go through that if you want to, there's just a lot of factors involved, but these, these scenarios just provide, you know, some options to the board, not only, not only just with lowering the tax rate, but you've got these, these other two options that you could use. I would say in addition, in addition to that, I like the scenario where you, where you reduce the rate. That's, I mean, my preference is, it makes my job a little harder to, you know, if we, if we change the methodology, for one thing, we've already slotted in clean trade-in numbers, we can go back and we can slot in average trade-in or rough trade-in, but that's going to be a redoing work that's already been done for one thing. So I mean, that can be done, I'm just saying it's something we have to redo. And then the proportional, you know, the proportional system where you go to like, you know, 90 or 85 or 80 or 70, whatever it would be, it's hard for me to know, pointing out, what is revenue neutral, you know? Like, like if you're trying to get to that, and, and the same thing like, the same thing really is for the, for the, for the slides with the methodology option. So these are the options I've got, I've got laid out, and, and so I'll just open it up. That's really all I would say. I hope you have any answer questions.
Mr. Thatcher, I know, maybe Cheryl needs to chime in too. Cheryl, when you did your scenarios A, B, and C, you were trying to estimate what that would look like as a revenue neutral for personal property, correct?
That's correct.
So would scenario A be somewhat aligned with what you've already proposed as?
So scenario A and scenario C be aligned with the scenarios because they both include the natural increase.
So we would be looking at the reduction in revenues based on what we've seen so far and read the documents?
That's, yeah, that's correct. And also, I know we're getting ready to talk about the rates, but there's a couple of things I want to point out. Our assessments are done on a calendar year, the budget's on a fiscal year. So this FY '23 budget is only going to have half of the collection. The other half will be based on next year's assessment. Also, we just talked about the natural increase, and one of the things that I think that we don't have to deal with when we try to do, when we try to do the rate for the real estate tax, is that we don't have abatements because houses don't move. And so we could be in a situation that we could have a couple of lien and abatements. So even scenario A and C, you could be at a disadvantage.
Okay, so in essence, what you're saying is that this time next year, if the blue book values go back to normal, we may have then a reduction in revenues based on lower values.
That's correct.
Turn to the next question. And, oh, one more quick question.
Well, if you would not, if you would not mind, Mr. McCarthy, I would just like to, you know, add, jump in there and say, and that was one of the things I did want to put out there as a board, is that, you know, that, that is a consideration I think is important to what happens next year. You know, do you drop all the way to 423, or do you drop somewhere between that, 486 and 423, to hedge your bets? You know, so, you know, I think, I think it's an important thing to weigh what you might want to do next year, and do you want, do you want to be in the position of raising taxes in a, you know, in a collection?
To that point, so if we were to set the rate at the normal rate, but use one of your alternate methods evaluation, so for instance, the proportional assessment, do we have the ability in January to change that proportion to a different proportion as a policy matter, or do we have to do that as part of the budget cycle when we pass our budget? So for instance, we said we will adopt 70% for this half of the year, and then we go, and if prices or values drop, can we then raise that proportion to 75 or 80 then in January?
Yeah, my, my answer to that would be, you have to do it like during the budget cycle, it would have to be something that, you know, you wouldn't want to do it two times through the course of the year. Like, it would, it would be a proportional for, for, for a year. So we would, we would pick for this year, say...
Is that the legal answer? We can't, we don't have the authority to do that, or is that just a preference of the commissioner's office?
Well, it's the, yeah, I'm trying to think through all the different scenarios of that, but that, that creates a lot of difficulty, I'm sure, between how, how things, how things work between commissioner's office and the treasurer's office. It becomes very, it becomes a little unguilty. I don't know, you know, if anybody else wants to speak to that, but it's, it's, that becomes kind of difficult if you're trying to break it apart, like for first half and second half, that's, it becomes, face of difficulties for sure.
Okay. And then another question with regard to scenarios, me and D, do you have an idea of what sort of estimate of what revenue reduction would be based on those two scenarios?
Would, is what you're asking, like what revenue neutral, like the amount there?
Well, no, based on Cheryl's proposed scenarios, how much of a reduction will we see if we adopted B or D?
Six million.
Six million?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in listening to the conversation, next year, I understand the values of vehicles could drop 15% or 20%, and we could be essentially revenue neutral. We have already, this year, them being as high as what they are, would have already received a portion of a higher assessment, would we not, the first six months of this year? And could we not carry over some of those ones from this year's budget to next year's budget? Is that a possibility?
Are you talking about the June collection?
Correct.
Okay, so this, when we set the rate on what it is, it will be half of that, so you'll recognize some of the income, but some of that's budgeted, so I'm not going to know who's happy to collect it if there was a windfall. Does that answer your question?
It does. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding what was being said here correctly. And I think that I do. So this year in June, we should see a substantial increase because of the realized appreciation in vehicles and personal property taxes, correct?
At the current rate?
At the current rate, that is, that's correct. So technically, we could take that additional revenue and hold it in escrow for next year, and if the rates, if the values of personal property dropped significantly, that money could be used as a stopgap measure to fill out the rest of the year, could it not?
So you are keeping the tax rate for the calendar year at 486? Is that what you're doing?
No, so I'm, I'm looking at scenario A here.
Okay.
So in scenario A, if we adopted scenario A today, kept the natural increase, and had that $6 million there from additional vehicles that moved in, we collected here in December off of current assessed values, then say in January, your personal property rates or values of vehicles dropped 20%, would we not have had the money from January through June of this year at the higher assessed value if we could take that money and roll it over essentially to an escrow, and if the values dropped 15% or 20%, that money could be used to fill that in? Is that possible?
I think that, sure, anything's possible, but I think that you're using one-time funds to have for continued operations, and that gets kind of scary.
But it could only be for the remainder of that fiscal year, so it would essentially be a wash, would it not?
The remainder of FY '23?
Correct. Because it would only be the second half, is all we're talking about, because we would be adopting a new budget next year this time. If the values, personal property values dropped, we could set the tax rate at whatever it needed to be.
Well, my second half wouldn't drop, my first half in June would drop if it dropped, not, not December.
That's what I'm saying. So we would have, we could essentially have a carryover for this year to put towards that drop, whatever it might be.
You can have excess funds that you could spend in, in a fashion that is different.
Maybe my understanding is a little different. My, my understanding is our budget fiscal year is mid-year to mid-year, but the tax rate we're setting is for the calendar year.
That's correct.
So if we adopt the scenario A, there's no windfall for the first half of this year because we're lucky it had the lower rate.
But you missed my point, supervisor.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, my point was, we already collected the excess the first half of this year.
No, it happened, it's not due till June.
It's not due to June. December, it was on the old assessment year.
Yeah, correct, but it wasn't the December one, but that's not, that's not the June one. So the June is on the higher assessed rate of these vehicles. You just said it was January through December is what we go by of personal property. So we didn't know this time last year if the vehicles were going to go up 15% to 30%.
If, if you're doing a natural increase and it's in a lower assessed amount or higher assessed amount and a lower rate, there is no windfall there. Only a windfall that you maybe did not recognize because it was New J area.
I think that's what I'm going to ask, that it's not a windfall, it's a, it's neutral.
Does that make sense?
It's neutral because what we're doing is we're lowering the rate to keep it to the same amount, so there's no additional money there to hold over in our next group.
Wait. These comments to Seth, first question to Seth. On A, if you're only, if you're doing A, you're essentially lowering the car tax, the rate on the value of the car, and business equipment is untouched, correct?
Yes.
On C, when you're lowering both the business equipment and, and the personal property, the reason that it's a higher number is because you're making the assumption, or I'm making the assumption, that the computer I have from a business has not appreciated 20%. Therefore, you've lost that, is that why that number, that 441 is higher?
Yeah, I think if I understand what you're asking, I think you're right in what you're, what you're saying. It's basically like scenario C, if you're lowering, if you're lowering those two rates to be, to be together, you're affecting a greater swath of income, let's say. And so like the rate doesn't go as low, that's why that rate is, 441 is a little bit above that 423. And so because you're spreading it over, the rate reduction over a greater swath of income. So at any rate, but why I don't like that one as much is because B is not facing NADA evaluation increases, and, you know, even, you know, business, personal property, vehicles though, will still kind of, still tend, still fall under scenario A. So like your computer, like normally, but like if you had a car in your business and, you know, by treating that, that would be, that would fall under A, and we'd get the reduction for, you know, for that, on that.
And then the latest question for Cheryl, for Mike, for whomever. Right now, after you made the comment, Mr. Fisher, that rates of increase that causes supply chain issues, $30,000 cars now worth $36,000 as an example, purely as an example. If those issues, supply chain issues still exist next year too, then the rate might not go down to the 20% that Mr. Graber's talking about, and then you have that situation. Is that a fair assessment or not a fair assessment?
Well, I guess what I would say is, the more, in my opinion, the longer time it goes, I think in the beginning, my opinion was, this could be a one-year blip. What I'm, what I think I'm learning over time is, I don't feel that it is, I think it's, this could be a two to three-year, you know, blip. Now, is, I don't think Mr. Graber's wrong, by the way, either, because it could, I think somehow, you know, somehow this could, the pressure could be removed by next year, just not 100% of it, maybe, maybe it is 10% or 15%, you know, drop, but I, will by next year at this time, will you drop back to what we would have otherwise done this, like a normal year? No, probably, my, my opinion is no.
The last question is, if the rate were left the same, as Mr. McCarthy said, or you said, if you got to 70% or maybe 60% on the rate, is that easier to adjust than the tax rate, or is it not, not an issue?
I'm not sure I got the full point there, but, but it is, it's easy to adjust the tax rate.
It is adjusted however, but if we took for simplicity's sake, 70% of the 46, or 60% of the 46, where it is to make it neutral today.
Of the 46?
Of the 486, $4.86. If you did that, then next year, if, as Mr. Graber says, the $30,000 goes back down to $29,000, not 36, then you could simply adjust that number, is that an easier thing to do?
I mean, to adjust the rate itself, I mean, it's always easy to adjust the rate, that's not a, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Anyone else? All right. Yes, sir.
Are we looking to turn it tonight, et cetera? Are we looking to turn it tonight to set a rate, or is that something for next week? Is there an ultimatum?
I think, considering the rate is an ultimatum, we hope we hold elections, but we can do a consensus.
If we're looking for consensus, I'm leaning towards scenario A. You're changing the rate versus one alternative method, and that's the sample.
I'm hoping to take A too, simply because it isolates just the car issue. And if two, three, four years from now, we have another issue, and the general sum is passed this, they can readjust that if they need to, so among these, I believe.
I'm with you.
Mrs. Jipal, on scenario A, that Mr. Thatcher is showing, it corresponds with more scenario A with the 1.3 million that reduction.
So when we adjusted those scenarios and we took that 1.3 million out, we kind of got back to a natural increase. We didn't have any room for assessments. So scenario A would fund any of the budget scenarios, as long as, as long as the abatements aren't too high. And it's always a question, I think that you could have businesses moving out, you're going to have, it goes both ways, but if we are in a situation that it's a large company, you really haven't put any flexibility in that rate. We've not done this before, so, you know, time will tell how, how we were at it.
So in my opinion, you've done an outstanding job guiding us down this path through COVID and a variety of things. So if we look at scenario A, and from what we have on our scenario A of funding, covering transportation, school funding, capital for the schools, et cetera, are you comfortable with scenario A for $4.23 and making sure that we have enough to address all of those issues?
So I, so I'm kind of depending on a lot of different numbers and assumptions. Most of those, I'm sure Seth feels comfortable with. I've never really had to worry because personal property is the one that kind of carried us a lot. We always had large, you know, growth was in the personal property. Am I scared? No. Do I, do I have concerns with that rate? I would like to have a little bit of flexibility in it if it was me.
And I appreciate the way you have looked at the county as a whole and trying to make sure that we're balanced and addressing those contingencies. So if I look at those scenarios, is there a scenario up there that you're comfortable with to address the scenarios you've presented to us?
I'm not comfortable with B and, B and D. A and C is, doesn't, I mean, that's a decision you'll have to make, it doesn't really change my numbers.
Mr. Chairman. The, 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 this is Florence's comment. If, if A and C is there, if that ink rate, if the rate increased by a penny or two or three, I mean, is there some point where then you are more comfortable with the flexibility that you have as opposed to 423? I mean, if 425 or 426 did the trick? I'm just asking as a best guess.
Fairly petty is about 130,000, so you can determine about that amounts.
Thank you. I would just like to make one other comment that, you know, I kind of meant to present during this and come back to, is put it under context relating to the business equipment. And that is that, you know, one reason I like scenario C less, doesn't mean it's a bad, bad option, but I like it less because when you, when you do that, you are, I don't know if at this point came out clearly enough, but you're, you're, you're going to sort of shift the tax burden from businesses to individuals, which, you know, that's not, Jipal, you know, recognizes not the, not the best way to go, but, but at the same time, you know, one thing, you know, it's been said that if you keep those tax rates the same, maybe they're causing less confusion on tax payers. So there's definitely some pros and cons with every scenario. And I just would, the last, the last thing I'll say is, this is a big decision for And I just would, the last thing I'll say is this is a big decision for the board and any counties all across the state are grappling with this. And, you know, to the extent that I can help, I would be happy to, please call me and talk to me and ask me questions if you think of other questions between now and April 13th. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. So I'm done. Thanks.
Yes, sir. I would be concurring with Mr. McCarthy, I would like to see scenario A.
So scenario A means that because that business equipment didn't increase in assessments, that the personal property subsavas enough?
At this point, we can't raise the tax on the business property to offset that because we've already advertised, correct?
So we advertised the 486. So you could, like in scenario C, if you did 441 for the business equipment, which didn't have an increase in assessment, their taxes would, I mean, the whole reason we're doing this is because assessments went up.
My understanding was that A, that was just a reduction of the car tax, not the business property tax? That's correct.
Yes.
So the business will stay static even if there was no increase?
I got it, yeah.
It should be static, only to the extent that, you know, all more equipment, then their tax rate might go up, or the taxes would go up. But otherwise, that's a no.
Mrs. Schiffler and Mr. Thatcher, when these scenarios were first presented, we looked at a 10% reduction in personal property across the board, correct?
That was, that, it was equivalent to a 10 cents. It was just a market adjustment that we put in there. It wasn't really reduced in the rate 10 cents. It's just that we pulled that out so we could talk about this without any market adjustment being in there. Does that make sense? It was equivalent to 10 because it was 1.3.
And each penny you say equals?
That's correct.
130,000.
That's correct.
So if we looked at this on personal property and on businesses, your assumption was 130,000 would equal 1 cent for businesses and personal property, correct?
No, here's just a total. It was a total of all assessed values, a total of all taxes collected. We didn't, we didn't put anything in any classes then. I think at that time we didn't know if we could put it in different classes.
So is the ultimate result then, to follow up on Judy's question, that by keeping the business property tax at the current rate and lowering the car tax to 423, it'd still equate to an overall 10% or 10 cent reduction, that 1.3 million? That's, and I guess I'm just trying to make sure that we're getting, that the numbers that we're looking at in our scenarios with A are going to be pretty close. I mean, obviously, we're not going to be exact. I don't expect anything like that, but that we're going to be comparable to what, so we have the same amount of money that we're working with when we discuss the next scenarios with A.
So A, B, all scenarios has a $6 million natural increase. And all of the commissioners' scenarios have the equivalent.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
So Cheryl, basically, so basically, the 423 would mean that if we had not had the increase of 25%, if that had just been normal, we're essentially where we would have been without that made increase. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Then, um, assume for a moment that you bought a car for 30,000 last year and in a normal situation, it depreciates to 29,000, 28,000. Instead, you bought the car for 30,000 last year and it increased to 36,000. So if, if you go from 30,000 to 28,000 and we kept the 46 rate, you'd have a dollar amount. The 423 compensates for that 20% increase to bring you back to where you would have been before. Is that correct? I think the answer is.
I can answer this if you want. And the answer is, in general, yes. Okay, now, you know, because it's so much different than real estate and, you know, people buy and sell cars all the time, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be people that will pay more, will still pay more taxes this year, even with that kind of reduction. But I think in the broadest sense, you will have most people, especially if you're talking about people that had the same car, same vehicle as they had last year, then the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Any comments?
John, well done. Sorry, I think Seth did a good job of playing examples.
Okay, ready to move on?
So do we, do we have consensus on A?
Aye.
So it's my turn? Okay. So now we're going to talk, so some of the things on this agenda are things that we haven't talked about and we just, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So on the outside agency, we usually go, we usually go through this and we chat about which ones we want to go on and what increases, who we want to talk to. We haven't done that this, this year. So I just want to go down this sheet and look at some of the ones that have increases. Years ago, the county decided not to take on new requests. So that's kind of been the rule that we followed. But we also had individuals last week stand up and talk about the Close Defenders Office and Village Legal Services. So that, so there was a lot of people last week that talked about the outside agency. So we wanted to make sure that we chatted about it. As of right now, the way we currently do things, we wouldn't fund the new request. Is, do we want to continue down that road? Okay. So we went through the files and we made some calls and chatted with individuals about the increases. So we'll just give you an overview. Northwestern Works, our funding pretty much provides the transportation. So this increase is for a transport van. Access Independence, their increase is 5,000. They indicated that they had more projects that were being requested, like ramps and homes. The Lord Fairfax.
What is that, I mean, what do they do?
They, they help, they help individuals who are like in wheelchairs access to get in other houses. I'm sure they do more, I just, I'm not familiar with the program.
Thank you.
The Lord Fairfax EMS Council, they ask for an increase every year and we keep it at present level.
Michelle, may I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Our rescue department is doing most, if not all, the same services that they're providing, which is teaching CPR, first aid to our first responders, teaching ACLS classes, PALS classes, a lot of the same, most of the same classes, we're already paying for with tax dollars. I think we should reduce that significantly. I think there should be some discussion there. I know other agencies are also looking at this number of reducing it because they are also providing it out of our own budgets within our rescue systems. It's duplication of pay, duplication of effort. I think we need to address that. I think that company is, it's not an analysis appropriate time to discuss that or what we're doing.
We usually just start dispersing checks to these agencies in August, kind of like the middle of the quarter. We can talk about it now. We can table it and put on an agenda item. It's where we feel comfortable.
Can we just let, let Mrs. Schiffler just go through the rest and then we can go back and shop out that?
Okay. All right, so that was Lord Fairfax EMS Council. The Health Department, they haven't had an increase in three years. And most of this goes through salary. It's a 5% increase they have budgeted. They also have some JR percentage changes between funding between the state and us. So some of it's that. Northwestern Community Services, they requested a 5% increase from all localities. The Laurel Center, this is probably the largest increase. I talked to Faith today and she, she indicated that they have a decrease in state grants and this will help them to continue their mandated programs that they have to carry out or that actually they're responsible for. Can I keep on going? Yep, okay. The tourism program, these funds are directly related to the increase in transit tax. The Lord Fairfax Community College, the explanation they gave us was that it supports scholarships and staff development. The Hammy Library, this is an MOU based on usage. Their total budget really didn't go up a lot. It's just our usage went up a couple points of a percent. And then Northwest NSV Regional Commission, this is based on per capita amount. In the past, we've not funded the increase.
Questions, anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have two comments. First comment still stands, I'd like to see us reduce the Lord Fairfax EMS Council back to 10,000 from what it is currently listed. Take it back to 10,000. And the Lord Fairfax Community College, we had a lot of discussion about last year with the name change. We decided not to do the adjusted budget last year. However, I could not support the increase this year with the amount of monies that they utilized to change their name last year. It was arbitrary and precious, in my opinion. And so I think that the original amount, 81,000, we already, we gave them last year is quite sufficient. So that's what I'm standing.
The 74? So you can get very shocked now about the Lord Fairfax.
I'm talking about Lord Fairfax. I'm talking about, I would be good with sticking with last year's amount, not with the increase of 10,000, so 37.
So a question on the Lord Fairfax, is that just an extra ask for scholarships or is that an increase based on our proportional use of the?
This is for the college board budget.
So it's not like this is part of that, the expected proportional payment that we paid, it's just an extra request?
That's correct.
And so on the Health Department, 435 and 17, if they had increased in three years, what's the other 400,000 coming from? Is that state coins or what?
So the Health Department, the increase that they requested is 17,000? And so your question is related?
So my first question is, the 486, the total funding amount, is that all, that's a combination of local money and state money? Is that all state money or what?
The 436 is our contribution. These are, these are general fund contributions.
Okay.
Agency request.
Okay, and so, for simplicity sake, if we, if we put that to zero, let's say if it went to zero, essentially that they would be out of business from the Health Department. Is that correct?
And they would have no local support. I think if you reduce them by the 436, I'm not sure what programs would change.
Well, plus, what's this as a percentage of the total?
I don't have that.
Okay. But then you made the comment that they've not had salary increase for the last three years?
I said that we hadn't increased their funding in three years.
All right, I think it's a great, thank you.
Mrs. Schiffler, on some of these that have asked for increases, would it be possible, and I don't know what our next budget meeting is going to be, but would it be possible to have some of these? Can we have one more?
Are you wanting to talk to agencies?
Well, we had some of these agencies that actually spoke at our public hearing, but some did not. With, with the ones that are increasing, it may be helpful for us to know what those increases are attributed to.
So we could certainly discuss which ones that you would like to talk to. I can't really guarantee them to be here by next Wednesday, but these payments don't go out until all of us. So it's not like we don't have time.
That's, that's good to know.
Makes it tougher then to develop their budget.
Maybe perhaps the easier or better way to do that would be to maybe have them look at a half page and opt this for justification is. Instead of having them come in and have to go through a whole, go show, they just give us a half page of why they need each one, and that's just nice.
Is that what you want? Do you want them for all of these or do you just want them for a couple?
I think it'd be great to have them for all.
Okay. The first two are still out? The first two on the list are still out?
My, my, Judy's.
I want to ask them for justification.
Yeah, don't make the actual.
Right.
I don't have too much concern with the, you know, except the great big ones. That's a lot to come, knock on the door and ask. Well, we, we took away the first two, but 120 for Northwestern Works. And I understand transportation's expensive, but, you know, did it jump 120% last year? I don't think so.
Sorry.
Access Independence, they do great things. Somebody would have to pick that up in the community. Probably, it's a big, it's a big jump, but probably okay. 5.4%, 5%, 2% for the Slow Water Conservation District. I think those are reasonable, I ask. Just my view.
Paul?
The agency on aging programs for the secured van. That doesn't keep them operating, but pays the price of van, which is, I heard Cheryl say.
The Northwestern Workshop, 30,000 increase. They, I think they want to buy a $40,000 transport van.
Yeah. What I was suggesting was that, you know, Access Independence, there are a number, there are local agency on aging typically get their vans funded. I think that same program is probably available to others, but I don't know that certainty.
We can ask.
That would be good to know.
Okay, so for the Community College, if we're going to keep that at present level, I'm not going to ask.
My view is that most of that goes straight to scholarships for Frederick James States. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, so when I asked last year how much went to scholarships, of the 81,000 we gave last year, the number was between 43,000 and 45,000. So that meant the remaining half did not. So I'm in concurrence with you, it's going to cut into our scholarships, the answer to that is no, but according to last year's numbers, it was 50%. And that's why I made the request that we kept it in last year's number, which might have led to actions.
May we also ask for clarification on matters of eligibility? We should at least have the courtesy of finding that information.
We can. Lord Fairfax EMS?
If Mr. Gray's, sorry, if Mr. Gray's comments are correct, I concur with him. I mean, I know that our rescue department are doing that, so if they do the same service we do, and it's only a duplication of success.
You might want to ask what the difference is between what we do training wise and what council does.
Go ahead. So having service in the Lord Fairfax EMS Council for 15 years as a medic, they write our protocols that we go by. But the classes themselves, ACLS classes, which is advanced body life support, pediatric advanced life support, the CPR classes, or all AHA classes, which are our association classes, the same exact classes that our instructors, we're paying to give the instructional programs to teach, it's the same, it's the same thing.
That being said, I'm not questioning what you're saying. I think we should, we should still get the same opportunity to respond to anyone else.
In that case, we won't be asking them to respond to the increase, but just the overall program.
Any comments? Anyone?
So we will get this information to you, I can't hear, I mean, not for next week, but prior to us disperse the funds.
Understood. Ready, anyone?
New positions, as you all know, there was approximately requested in the budget about $2.8 million in new positions. Subsequent to that, I was requested to, to research against. to get my opinions on positions I thought were probably most needed, I've done that research, I met with several departments and several different employees, I did research and submitted a subsequent form, what I thought were most important positions, we wanted to open this up tonight, get the opinion of the board and the direction of the board, running it forward with that, because that's probably the next big issue when coming to a final budget, and just going to open up our conversation.
I'd like to start that, you know, most, all of our departments are increasing demand for their services, I mean, did people ask for 16 people or what?
I think, I can go over a couple of key ones, for instance, I will talk, as I put in that sheet, for instance, I think a key position, positions to be overlooked, and have you looked at Communications and Dispatch, when I met with Tamara on that, she believes that she does need positions, however, as you know, they approved a new supervisor position, and in discussions with her, she understood the logic of, let's see what happens when you get the new supervisor in, get them to be fully staffed, and then reassess whether or not those positions are needed, and in that discussion, she was fine with that, but with the understanding, I think it does need to be looked at when she gets to that position, to see if she really needs positions. Now, certainly as other, you know, the radio technician, about when we go through these many justifications, my, the radio technician, fact is you're investing a sizable amount in the radios, to have a person on staff who has the skills to work with radios and all the future communication devices, seems to be a justification with that. The Social Services, they're already, they're doing a lot of work, they're overwhelmed, and they actually requested two positions, one position was more doing the administrative type of work, I think for the long term, we'd like to take a look at how we're doing administration over the whole organization, and see if, see if there's a better way to consolidate services and find things to do different. Once again, it may need to be revisited, we'd be, we'd like to take a look at that opportunity. The Planning Department, the growth is coming, it's going fast, I think, Wyatt made a good presentation to the HR committee, as just demonstration of the need for that position, so I keep moving forward, I'm going with planning, because they are overwhelmed there. Parks and Recreation, they requested two positions, I met with them, obviously, well, I'll say every department has pleased they need every position, I've been in that position, I always need positions, and sometimes it's what you need, what can we really afford to balance in those. Their two positions, their parks and maintenance technician is the most important because of all the amount of parkland they have to maintain, they think their supervisor position in the Recreation, in the Recreation Park will be needed, but this would get them by, and they can go with this. Public Works, Environmental Inspector, Public Works, talking with Joe, they're already overwhelmed, he says, and they're getting people coming in left and right, now they're getting ready to see this building really pick up, and their industrial leader, environmental engineer, that's the greatest end now, and I would not be surprised in the future if they come back talking about inspectors and such. Good news is, a lot of that speed base, you can recuperate some of that money. On the Sheriff's Department, I'd like to work with the sheriffs and just work with them to get a better detail of where their long-term outlook is, where they're going with their growth as a sheriff's department, you know, obviously, they need more sheriffs because they have, we need to start looking at population growth, they're spread out more and more houses, but I would like to see before you go, because I requested 10 positions, a better detail and explanation of that, so I can feel more confident going back to this board to justify that. They may need those positions, but I would like to see a better justification, but I think they absolutely need to have at least these three positions, just because of the amount of work they're dealing with. One good news is, I think there's an opportunity, if they get up to fully staffed, they'll also have a better idea of how many officers they need, because as you know, they've been understaffed and using a lot of overtime. And on Child Services, you approved this position for the SAP at the last meeting, I think Jacqueline distributed a sheet to all of you on the board, which demonstrated in that sheet that this position will actually in the long run save their money, both short term and long term. In the short term, by not having to fill out those services, it will reduce costs for contract labor for doing services, and in the long term, preemptively addressing these issues when people are younger, means you won't be dealing with these same issues as these, as people get older, go through the system, and her sheet, I understand, you distributed to you, I think they did a great job of demonstrating that. But that's the short.
Can I follow up?
Please.
Any department that deals with the growth that's going on, whether it be plan review, field work, and following inspections, the paperwork and everything else, I mean, they need new people, there's no question in my mind about it, I've talked to them again and again. So those are the ones that I think are most urgent, they're overwhelmed completely, and we know what's stacked up that hadn't even been touched yet, but been submitted. Thank you.
Mr. Ballhopper, I don't know whether you spoke to firefighters, but we had in our packet, the eight firefighters that would come on mid-year, and certainly in full support of that, in visiting our stations, they're all in need of additional staff, call volume has certainly increased exponentially, so definitely in favor, I'm certainly in favor of, we'll need additional positions that we.
Can I have that, just in those recommendations, my recommendations, I just failed to mention it. That'll support Mrs. Waters' comments on that, I mean, I had a conversation with staff three years ago, the comment was, I was not inclined to support that, we cannot get volunteers, but we're not getting the volunteers we need, so I think those eight are an important addition to reduce response time for what we need. In addition, I think that we often expect that the next year and the year after, they're probably going to come back with some additional requests, et cetera, just to meet the growing demand we have, so I expect this not to go away, unless we have volunteers that will come out of the woodworks, but I think this is important just for response time issues.
Doug?
Mr. Ballhopper, thank you for what you said, a couple of points I'd like to follow up on Judy. On the firefighters, I agree with you, but I think as the county continues to take over more and more responsibility in the role of supporting the fire and rescue departments, we need to expedite the discussion at our level of what is that relationship going to look like into the future, so, like it, this board and the fire department to sit down in the very near future, and start discussing what that looks like, I think we've made some progress with regard to purchasing the reserve units and those other things, and, but I think there's a lot more discussion than these we had about, you know, monies that are flowing back to volunteer departments that may not be committing as much volunteer manpower, where the county is covering a lot more of it, or recovering a lot more of the costs of maintaining their stations, so I think we really need, if we're going to continue down this road, which seems inevitable, I don't think there's any way around it, we need to really expedite that discussion in the near future, so hopefully you can help us make that happen soon. With regard to the Sheriff's Department, I'm glad to see that you're looking at that as a holistic point of view to make sure that we're on track there, so I appreciate that. What I'll point out from the county's overall, you know, over the last 20 years, if you look at things like county planning, most of our, other than fire, rescue and social services, most of our departments have stayed pretty flat as far as hiring, yet over the last 20 years, we've had a 50% increase in our population, so I think it's, you know, indicative that this is the time that we need to start looking at sort of shoring up those departments, they've done a great job, and to be able to trust those departments who have done such a good job with, you know, a shoestring budget, so to speak, with their employees, I think this will give them the extra support they need to move us into the future, so I support much of what you brought forward, I do hope, do focus on that firefighters, the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department moving forward in the next budget cycle as well.
And I, Mr. McCarthy, just sorry, just going back to your, just going back to your comment, the Fire Chief did have a meeting with Public Safety Committee, laying out a 10-year plan, I've asked him to do that, he did it again at the voluntary fire rescue last month, I think that Ross, if he can come in here and give us a half hour, 45 minutes, uninterrupted, he can lay out what I saw, which was, this is where we are today, this is where we need to go in the next 10 years, here's the areas that we have response times that are met, here's the areas that we have response times that are not met, and as I made the comment last week, one of the comments was, I made the comment for planning, that there's some roads in this county where fire rescue equipment cannot get to, and that may have significant time, so for the Planning Department, as we go through with roads, I think we just need to have that very clear as part of any development, that there will be, not maybe, but there will be for all roads, access for emergency equipment to come through without any problems at all. But Mr. McCarthy, I think that your request is a good one, and if we get Mr. Byshak to come through, so that I think will answer both questions, he's done a good job on the 10-year plan, I think that's probably, thanks.
Yeah, I just want you to concur on the Fire Department, you know, my experience of everyone, you look at fire and police, especially fire, when you look at the capital costs and the personnel costs, you know, firefighters come in bunches, you don't just hire one, you put on a new engine, and so, so the expenditures over the long term are going to be, they're expensive, so you really do need to have a well thought out plan, make sure you're doing it correctly, so, I just want you to concur with that.
Good, thank you. I would concur with both of my fellow senior judges' comments regarding the Fire Department, and I have a little large concern, and I've been saying this for two years, we've had this 50/50 allocation of funds for the recovery for many years, we've taken over two fire departments as far as the expenses for Round Hill and the Fummelwood Station, that wasn't part of that. We are staffing, most of the, as I've seen, north of 90% of the calls are back career staff, so it really makes me take pause, and so why we're giving such a large percentage of our money back to some of these departments who are not running the calls, I'll use a station that serves my house, they have not run an EMS call in two years, it's been on career staff. So, 80% of the cost to run a EMS call is personnel on average nationwide, we are giving the department that serves by home 50% of the revenue, when it has been 100% career staff running the calls for the last two years. We have absolutely got, we must, change our percentage, change our formula, and have that discussion first before we get down the road much further, because I think that will allow us to have funding, and allow us to really look at the opportunities that we have going forward. It's, in my opinion, wrong to continue to give money to agencies who are not pulling their share of the weight, and that is concerning to me. The second thing is, is about three months ago now, the Fire Chief came to us with a list of apparatus, that he said fire engines were 20 years old, the average ambulance was 60 years old. I asked for an updated list, because I knew there were five new fire engines purchased, and there's been several brand-new fire engines backed into the bays over the last 45 years, so I wanted to know what the average age of the first-out engines and the first-out ambulances will be in the county, once those pieces of apparatus are here. If you look at what happens in Arlington County, in Alexandria City, and all these other larger localities of Loudoun County, where they like to keep comparing this to, the first-out engine is a good engine, it's usually 10 years or less, so it has all safety features there for our personnel, not only for our personnel who are responding to the call, but it has the latest technology for our citizens when that piece of apparatus gets there. We don't need to have three brand-new engines at each station if we don't have volunteer personnel staffed. What we need is a good first-out piece at each station, similar to what Loudoun County has, similar to what Arlington County has, similar to what Loudoun County has, you see other places, a good first-out piece, and then a capable red reserve piece. Some of the agencies I know in our district, in our county, have three ambulances or even more, the same way with fire engines, that are never going to get out the door, because there's not the staffing to get them out the door. So, we have to look at two things, the first is, is our funding formula 50/50 with the brother recovery that we're doing now, and the second, we need a true comprehensive look at what money we're spending, or what apparatus is in the county, so we have a good idea of how much we're going to need to spend going forward on apparatus or apparatus replacement. Thank you.
And I agree, once again, just looking at this from the bigger picture, because the, the cost can be overwhelming to make sure our department and the county's going the right path.
All right, ready, anyone to, about a funding scenario?
Okay, so this evening, so these are the same scenarios that we chatted about a couple weeks ago, wood is in red, changes that I've, that I made, we had the health insurance savings, which we talked about last time, but also we had some reduction in our, in our adult retention funding, so that freedom, what we do is we run, like our contingency now is 300, so whatever, everything kind of runs through there, any of these savings, or any additional funding that you do. We advertise scenario A, we will be adopting the budget in two weeks, and so that resolution will have to identify the funding to the schools.
Mr. Chair? I'll let you go through, unless, Mr. Shetler, you want to go through additional comments, I'd like to make some comments on the school funding.
You go ahead.
So, what you have on the screen is, and then I'm just going through on the funding, funding's approximately $100 million. And so what we have here is, going left to right, the number sits, so the year 2011/2012, there were 13,043 students, and then it goes down to the current 14,0062, which is the number of students according to school, or ASMR. Then you have the operating expenses of $127 million in 2011, it goes down to 219, or 194 for the current year, 219 for the proposed year. Capital is self-explanatory, debt services is self-explanatory, nutrition's gone in the $6 million range, to the $7 million range, to the $10 million range currently, textbooks, NREP, private purpose, and consolidations. So that's what you have on that. This is the same information, just to make it a little bit clearer, so as you can see, the FY 2011, the operating capital to debt, it's the same numbers here, as you see on operating, you've gone from 175 million in the year 2019, to a proposal of 219 today in a three-year timeframe. In nutrition, you've gone from 7.8 last year to 10.1 this year. Textbooks have gone from 4.2 million, down to 2.87 million, so it's, four, so the 4.2, down to 2.8, down to 3.0. Private, private, private purpose has gone from 75,000 to 600,000, consolidated services has gone down. I've been told that private purpose is for private money, so John Doe dies, he leaves a million dollars for scholarships, and that's not tax money, I'd like to see a confirmation of that, but that's what I've been told. The question is, where did you go from 300,000 just three years ago, to 675, maybe some people gained additional monies, but that's plus, and if schools are raised money without taxpayer support, appreciate that. For the consolidated services, this is for transportation issues, and so one question I just posed generally is, does it make sense for the county to have one transportation facility to fix everything, the sheriff's cars, the buses, everything else, as opposed to the sheriff having transportation, schools have transportation, et cetera? I don't have a best solution tonight, but I just want to put that out as a point of This is the same data that shows the percentage increase on a year-by-year basis, so as you can, so as you can see, the student change has gone from .2 to negative, to zero, and over the last 10 years, you've had a 342 person increase from, we have about 1,000, sorry, I apologize, you had about 1,000 person increase from 2011 to today. Operating expenses have gone from 127 to 219 at the bottom, and again, you can take a look at the numbers that are there. Here's a summation of what we're looking at. In FY 12, the operating budget was 127 million, there were 13,000 students. In FY 22, the current year that we're in, the current operating budget that we approved is 194 million, there's 13,919 students as of September. CPI, total CPI, February, from February 11 to February 21, is 18.8%, the student increase is 6.7%. If you take a 2% salary over COLA, so I asked Mr. Shetler to give me merits in COLAs for the last 20 years, in the last 10 years approximately, you've had salary increases that are about less than a point over COLA, so it's been COLA plus a point over the last 10 years, or some years moved on, or some years that were, that were higher, the last 10 years was .86, so I'm just rounding that off to one, and to make this more interesting, I just put a 2% figure there instead of one. So you have a 28% total increase, so if you take the 127 million... have a 28% total increase, so if you take the 127 million, and that 28% total increase, you'd have a budget of $161 million. That's $32 million more than the current operating budget of 194. If you had moved that forward a year, in FY 13, operating budget was 131. The student population was 50,066. The FY 23 proposed budget was 219. I'm using the current population of 14,0062 as the student population. That's a 34% increase. If you took the 131 figure, you'd be at the 176 million. That's $43 million less than current proposed 219. If you then, on the third item, take a look at the adjusted budget of 161, which is this figure here, so taking for the previous 10 years, and having that as a solid number. And that's, that 161 is what I'm using as a starting point up here. With the 13,000 students, the proposal of 219, CPI at 7%, the student increase of 1%, the salary over COLA at 2%, it's a 10% total increase, and you'd have 178 million, or a $41 million differential. Then the last one, if you have FY 22, 194, the proposal is 219, again adding a 7% CPI, a 1% student increase, a 2% salary over COLA, gives you a total 10% total, you'd be someplace in the neighborhood of 213 million, or $5.7 million less than the current proposed 219. So at that, my questions are, what's the difference? So we're looking for a number. I'm not necessarily going to propose a number, but I was just laying out numbers and saying, fine. The student population's grown by about 1,000 people in the last, or sorry, about 1,000 people in the last 10 years, because the budget for that is growing by $100 million. The proposal budget's $110 million between 2013 and now, it's 90 something going between 2011 to 2021, '22. So that's a huge dollar amount. Anybody's welcome to take a look at these numbers, you know, different perspectives like this, I'll be glad to listen to it. But I'm just looking for some answers on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just for clarification, so this exercise, you're basically taking a budget from 10 years ago, and saying if I simply take the operating budget and adjust it for known increases in costs for COLA inflation, and add an extra 2% on top of that for teacher pay, you get a particular number, and you're basically, the theory would be, that would be a normal amount of growth in a budget? And then the question is, okay, if you take that number and compare it to the actual number, you have a gap, a delta?
Yes.
Then the question is, why is the delta?
Yes. And there's one component of this that I'm not just positive of. I don't know the salary, the salary for Jordan Springs, that's a new school, so we had to hire some new people, so I don't know how that goes into that. I don't know if that's 2, 3, 4, $1 million, but that's just something that I don't know at this point. The other schools that we built, Frederick middle, Frederick middle and Yale are simply replacement schools, so the staff's normally going to be the same.
So to play devil's advocate, even if they're not the same, what you're saying is there's some delta between 5.7 million and 43 million. And you're saying, can someone explain to me where that extra growth in the budget occurred?
Correct.
And that could be things like the additional schools that have been built that have new staffing. It could be other things, but you want to know why?
Right. I mean, 10 years ago, you were training teaching students, and you had a cost per student, and that cost has gone up by over $100 million. And that's a million dollars per student, and that's a huge amount. So I'm just looking to see why. Some of them might be because of COLA, some of them might be because of other items, but that's something that ought to be addressed.
And I didn't have a chance to look. You sent an email before this. Is this what was in the email?
Yes.
I'm meeting with Brian Hester, the finance chair of the school board on Monday. Is it okay if I share this information?
Sure. I think, I mean, this is public information. I sent a copy to you all in the work on this for two days, and I think that, you know, there's some answers that I'd just like to have, that will help us arrive at a number. Because the competing doublers for this are going to be transportation, at least, at least from my perspective, it's transportation. I live in Red Bud. Sesame Road is meant to be a four-lane road. Each one of you, those that are part of this county, where you could also say, I got roads that need to be fixed. We have approximately 1,000 houses that are being built that will go on Sesame in the next few years. Some of them are neighbors point, some behind where I'm living. And how do you handle that traffic coming here tonight, Mr. Chairman? I was literally sitting in line, waiting for four lights just to get through one traffic light. And so it's an issue that we'll have to address. I was having a conversation with the administrator earlier. The transportation needs we have in the next 10 years are a billion dollars. We've talked before about I-37, and if we build that budget, it's a cost. If we don't build it, it's a cost of ramification, so that's a trade-off. So I'm just looking to see different sources of problems, and if somebody has a better way to do it, but these numbers here are significant. I went through with Mr. Bahopper, our budget, doing the same thing I'm doing here. And as Mr. McCarthy said, our staffing level has been pretty flat, other than fire rescue, chair, and social services. And that's the areas that have grown, because they've had to. So I think the staff has done a good job of trying to keep costs down, as our population grows, we're going to have, as you said, Mr. Chairman, additional needs. So I'm just trying to propose, you know, some thoughts to that. Last comment on this issue, you've heard me say it before, but if we can find another alternative source of funding for capital costs for the growth we have, something I think we ought to address, we'll be addressing this budget cycle, which things we should discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just briefly had an opportunity to look at what Lane has started out presenting to us here. And I agree that there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. Last board supervisor meeting, the superintendent of schools came forward and said, made reference to a nearly 16,000 line item budget. I know that supervisor McCarthy has asked many times, and laid out there in front of us, all the budgets for some of the localities that were several hundred pages quick, but I have personally asked to be a phone call tonight, board representative, for that 16,000 line item budget, for us to really see what is being requested, and how they intend to spend money. Just today, I filed an official FOIA's request in an attempt to get that 16,000 line item budget that was indicated was present at the diocese on Wednesday. It is my hope that I can get a copy of that line item budget that was referenced, and hopefully that will help to answer some of the questions that are laid out here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question that doesn't necessarily pertain to what they were talking about, but, Chairman. Early this week, you gave us some numbers on the splits between the school and the rest of the county, and just so I have some clarity, I'm a little bit confused. So we used to have sort of like this 57-43 split. Now we've done away with that. Is the number that you gave me, 63%, does that equate to what 57 would have been? Is that a difference?
Yes. So we had the 57-43, then last year, I think we went 50-50. And then the first, the first number I gave, which was 27%, that's, that's the 57%. That was what replaced the 57%.
Okay, that's the new money?
The new money.
Okay. So when we used to do the 57%, that was always just new money, that, or was that the total budget was always 57-43?
It was new money. It kind of came close to the total, but it was new money when we were talking about it.
So if it's based on the scenarios now, we're looking at a 63% split on the total?
Yeah. It would be, so the 63% was the total budget, which is like 425 million. So 63% of that 425 goes. But if we had new revenue of 20, 21 million, and scenario, say scenario A, they would get 5.9 of that.
So this 270,000 is 63% of our total budget?
That's correct.
Okay. So the schools would receive, for capital, operating, everything, all in, 63% of the county's total budget?
Yes, which then that also includes state, federal revenue.
Okay. So of the, and of the county, so the state federal revenue, is that built into the 425 number, or is that not part of that number?
The state revenue is in the 425.
Yes, sir. If I could ask Lane a couple questions. Just want to try to play devil's advocate with your numbers, and I don't think I'm able to dispute them at all. But there's two things I want to make sure I clarify.
That's fine.
So one of them is on operating costs, and we have new facilities, we need more teachers to teach more students. But that's not going to make a difference in your assessment, as I understand it, because you basically compare to the operating costs per student, right? So you, so you grew the operating cost, one of your factors was by the student population growth.
Correct. So on the calculation, there was a factor on, if you have $100, 10 years ago, and then adjusted for CPI, adjusted for the percentage change in students, and adjusted for a salary increase over COLA. So I'm putting those factors in there. So it's adjusted for the student growth of those occurring, yes.
So I just want to make clear to myself and everyone else, that you talked about a percentage increase in students, but you've accounted for the percentage increase in teachers as well that goes with that, because of that, you inflated as well, the operating cost for child.
Correct, correct.
So that's covered. That's not, that would not be an explanation for the budget increase in as large as it has, unless we're hiring more administrators, people, you know, above and beyond average student rate.
The only thing that I can think of is that in the last 10 years, you had a new school of Jordan Springs. So I don't know what the cost is for the principals, vice-principals, counselors, teachers, that's, that's no cost to me. The capital costs are already built into the capital box, so that's, capital costs are, capital costs are what they are, the debt service is what it is. So for operations...
But if the salaries of the principal, et cetera, at Jordan Springs are comparable to the salaries elsewhere, they would be accounted for that, right?
I'm counting for that, I think, and then if the schools want to come up with, hey, here's the cost, and I'm looking at this number, adjusted accordingly. My purpose for this is to say, from an analytical viewpoint, these are numbers, what do they say, et cetera. So that's what I'm laying out.
No, I greatly appreciate the analytical approach. And then the other piece was the 2% you showed salary over COLA, so I want to get it clear in my head, and to, you know, to everyone else as well. We're not talking about only 2% salary raises for teachers beyond cost of living, because the other thing that happens is some senior teachers retire one year after another, and younger teachers join in. It's, so as long as your distribution of experience is the same, you know, all other things are constant, right, then they're getting raises, and as they increase in their experience and move up the ladder, as well as the COLA, as well as another 2%.
Right. So if we're talking about Mr. Shetland, this is for the county side. I don't have the stuff for the school side, it's an approximation. But on the county side, in the last 10 years, when you take merit and COLA together, then you compare that with CPI, in the last 10 years, it's been approximately an 86% differential, in other words, 0.8% per year. So if you round that off, you're rounding it to 1, because I didn't notice that, so I took the number up to 2. Then you can take that number up to 3 if you want. So simplicity say, what that represents is that if a person had a 3% COLA, or 2% COLA, they had 5% salary, that would be a 7%, that would be reflected there. If COLA was 1.5%, you had 4% salary, it was 1.5 to 4, or 5.5, that was reflected in the numbers. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I just didn't see, so I don't want anyone to think, unless I'm incorrect. Again, I was trying to play devil's advocate.
That's fine, that's fine.
I was trying to say, we're only allowing teachers a 2% raise per year of COLA, but that's not what your numbers are showing, because as seniors, as teachers become more senior, they replace senior teachers who retire.
It's the, it's the aggregate.
So they're also getting that increase.
But it's the aggregate, but, you know, it's the total salary, and it's, some teachers, some, I believe everyone's getting the same percentage wise, but dollar wise it's going to change.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect to both of you gentlemen, there's a lot of speculation in what you're talking about. I think the bottom line, as someone would look at it, is 10 years ago, we had 1,000 students fewer. 10 years later, we have 1,000 students more. We're paying almost 100 million more in the budget, so what is that? I think ultimately, if the school system can answer that for us, then we don't have to speculate, we don't have to go through these machinations. So I appreciate the cerebral gymnastics you're doing, but I think ultimately, what we really need to do is just find out, you know, what causes a 100 million dollar increase?
Well, you have to run through this exercise to eliminate things. For example, inflation. You want to make sure it's not just inflation that's shown up.
I agree with you, but I think, wouldn't it be a lot easier if we actually had budgets to look at with real numbers, so we wouldn't have to speculate that much?
I concur.
I concur.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McCarthy working on that. If I, if I received my FOIA's request with the 16,000 bucks for apparatus, I'll be sure to show it to every one of us on the board, so we can have a further dialogue.
I think it's going to require more than that, because that's one year. I think this is something that we can work with the school board. We got a commander from the school board at that last workshop, to start having discussions about these things. I'd like this, to continue having those discussions with them. I'm going to bring it up with Mr. Hester on Monday, and I'd like to work with the school board on all of these things. I think this is, this may be a long-term, a long-time issue, and I wonder too, you know, over the years with the 57% split, was that part of what led to such drastic increases? If we had artificial splits, were we just putting money into a bucket that was being spent, and, you know, maybe it wasn't the best use? I'd like, I don't want us to come to any preconceived notion. I think there's a question, a great question, which is why hasn't the cost gone up 90 million dollars over 10 years? So that's what I'd like to see from the bottom, but without too much speculating.
So from both of your comments, I think the problem with getting a detailed budget, if we don't have detailed budgets from previous years, and you really want to go back 10 years, because year over year, you know, sometimes there's fluctuations that are just anomalous from one year to the next. But if you, if you have that kind of detailed data every year for 10 years, or at least from 10 years ago and now, then you could, then you could definitely look at where those differences are.
That's the reason I use the 10-year analogy, just to take out one-year fluctuations, just the way you do for investment situations under earnings. 10 years will give you the average over the timeframe, then we can have a discussion on the numbers we've got there.
All right, you ready to move on?
So, so we are going to talk about these scenarios, and our resolution, and the school amount, or are we going to say that for another day?
I'd like, I'd like to put off until next week. I'd like to have a chance to talk with Brian Hester through some of this before we make a decision.
So it looks like it's going to be next Wednesday?
Will that give us time before the meeting to, the resolution?
Oh, yes. Speaking of the resolution, we also need to chat about, you know, last year, I think we did an A and a B, one's categorical, one's not. Is that how we want to proceed with that?
Can I get that one tonight?
Well, what's going to happen is, is that I have the numbers based on scenario A, categorically as well. If we shift to scenario C, I'm going to have to ask for that information.
I guess for me, I'm not, I ask for C openly, but I'm not whetted to see at this point, kind of intrigued by information that Lane's brought to us. And I feel more informed now with the information that Lane's brought to us. So I'm not sure I'm set on any of these particular, at this point. So is there time? Do we need to have an interim meeting between now and next Wednesday, or do you feel like?
So next Wednesday, when we chat about which scenario, then that agenda goes out Friday, which would have your resolution in it. So I would have to ask for the categorical numbers, if there are any difference between what we do in A.
Meaning this Friday or next Friday?
Next Friday.
Okay. So we wouldn't be voting on this if next, or we don't, meaning next week is the following week?
Four weeks. Next, next week is our work session.
So you need a number by Friday, or you need a scenario by Wednesday, so you can get the numbers by Friday?
Yes, and I'm asking for those numbers next Wednesday, so...
So we need to come up with our plan by next Wednesday?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Is everyone happy?
So, so what we're going to do as staff, is we're going to get the information for the outside agencies. We're going to send it out when we get it, and we'll revisit that. Next Wednesday, we are talking about scenarios, and you're going to share with us about your meeting. Is that correct?
Okay. Can you further? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this were, first off, I wanted to record for business costs, business taxes, Tom, Dick, and Harry all working three different types of businesses, have they paid for rates for that? So not for this year, but when we go into next year's budget, being six months from now, I want to have that as part of the discussion. Just because the dollar's a dollar, how you're in it should be irrelevant to the waste tax, so I'm just going to put that as a part, that's all. The next budget cycle, not this budget cycle.
As I say, we're going to, as our time is...
Next budget cycle, that's next year, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else comment, any kind? Can we thank everyone who's standing there?